We'll have the real call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
And Mayor Neely?
Here. And since Commissioner Polly was goofing off or something at the last commission meeting, we weren't able to swear her in as an official commissioner. And I really appreciate our judge, our municipal judge, for coming out here to sessions in a row to go ahead and administer the oath of office to Carol for her successful run for election for this position.
Yes. You're going to have a plea after me. I, Carol Polly.
I, Carol Polly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the--
And as the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability--
And that I will, to the best of my ability--
Faithfully perform--
Faithfully perform--
The duties of City Commissioner--
The duties of City Commissioner--
Of Oregon City--
Of Oregon City--
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Well, thank you so much for coming and doing this again. I was ill with the flu and, no, I wasn't goofing off.
I understood you were having meals brought to you in your bed and everything.
Yes.
By your children.
Probably the only time that'll happen. But it is my pleasure and honor to serve the city of Oregon City with such great citizens and just the involvement of everybody in this community with all the boards and commissions and neighborhood associations and just all the volunteers in the city. It's truly a group effort. So, thank you so much. I want to thank my family, too, and all my friends and everybody that's been very supportive of me during just all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a quick reminder for everybody to get their flu shot.
Thank you very much. And we're going to have as our first agenda item, the legislation report presentation from Chris Fick, Lake Oregon Cities. Is there any introduction that we want to do ahead of time?
No, just welcome Chris Fick from the League of Oregon Cities, who is here to speak on two legislative topics that the commission has requested. So, welcome, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission for having me. Again, Chris Fick with the League of Oregon Cities, here to talk to you this evening about two of the league's top legislative priorities for the 2013 legislative session in Salem regarding property tax reform. I'm going to try and address both referrals that we're going to be seeking from the legislature separately. Because of the complexity of our property tax system, there is inevitably overlap. So, if questions arise during the course of the presentation, please don't hesitate to interrupt me so that we can make sure everyone's on the same page. The league's going to be seeking two constitutional referrals. These would be measures that would be referred to voters to modify the Constitution. The first would modify Measure 5, which voters passed in 1990. Measure 5, just for a quick background, capped property taxes for general governments at schools at $10 per $1,000 of real market value and $5 per $1,000 of real market value, respectively. Under the general government category, you have cities, counties, and special districts that are all lumped together under that $10 limitation, and schools obviously have a separate $5 limitation. So, these limitations reflect 1.5 percent of a property's real or fair market value. So, they largely limit the real estate market. When the real estate market's doing well and growing, these limitations don't play as large of a role on city or school budgets as they do after the market's crashed, as it has recently. These limitations, it should be noted, do not include capital bond measures. Compression is what occurs, it's a fancy term for what occurs when taxes exceed that $10 or $5 limitation. In order to bring the tax level down to within those $10 or $5 limits, what's reduced is known as compression. And the first thing that's reduced or compressed under our hierarchy of compression are any voter-approved local option levies. So, if voters approve additional money for public safety, additional money for parks, libraries, schools, those are the first things that are reduced, all the way down to zero, before any permanent rates are affected. More than half of Oregon cities are in compression, as are all of the 36 counties and 90 percent of school districts. And as you'll see in the next chart, two charts away, compression losses are increasing pretty dramatically. So, just an example of what compression would look like for a single household, because it is calculated property by property. In 2009, we have a fictional property that has a real market value of $200,000. Therefore, its Measure 5 limits on the general government side are $2,000. This property is taxed to its maximum ability, so there's a $50 local option levy, school district levy's $500, city $650, and a county $800. That combined adds up to $2,000 exactly. But over the course of the next three years, the real market value declines 10 percent, so the real market value of the property is now $180,000. The Measure 5 limits are $1,800. The first thing right off the bat that's completely gone is this property's contribution to that voter-approved local option levy. That's zeroed out. And then all the other permanent rates are reduced proportionally. You multiply this over dozens, hundreds, thousands of properties, and even with reductions larger than this, and you can see how this could wreak havoc on municipal budgets. This is a graph of the trends of compression losses. Since Measure 50 was implemented in 1997, schools, compression for schools has increased by 216 percent since the collapse of the housing market. Cities have seen compression losses increase by 161 percent and counties by 154 percent. County assessors are just now putting online their information for the 2012, 2013 fiscal year, and compression losses we anticipate are going to continue their trajectory. This is an example, this is a page that just shows the voter-approved local option levies that suffer the worst compression. So, the Morrow County School District levy loses 72 percent of what voters approved due to compression.
Loses.
Right. Westland and Wilsonville School District loses 71 percent of what voters approved to compression. Tiger Chawalton's at 57 percent. The Portland Children's Levy's at 47 percent. Portland Public Schools Levy loses over a third, and the Sweet Home Police and Library levies collectively lose a third as well. So, the league and cities have three primary problems when it comes to compression and this issue. First, it undermines local control. Voters are no longer in control of the services that are provided. The example that we often use is the community of Sweet Home. It's a small timbered suburbanic community in Lynn County. It has a low permanent property tax rate for a city of its size of 9,000, of just $1.42 per thousand of assessed value. So, the community's been heavily reliant, all the way back since 1986, on a local option levy to fund its police and library services. But due to compression, the city loses a third of what voters approved due to compression. So, the police and library services that voters have come to expect are not being provided at an adequate level that they expect. And voters have long approved these temporary taxes, and they just passed most recently in 2010 with 60 and 55 percent of the vote, respectively. The Oregonian pointed out that this fosters a belief in bad government. Voters often approve these temporary tax measures. This isn't an instance when everyone's favorite tax is one that's imposed on somebody else. These are voters who are willing to say, yes, we're willing to pay more for additional teachers, additional police officers, or additional services, but they can't pay that amount. And there's a real disconnect when the services that they approved aren't provided. And so, there's a quote from somebody who's outside of the Multnomah County library system. Voters approved extension of a local option levy in May of 2012, but the levy was significantly compressed, and as a result, they had to close on Mondays and reduce hours and other services. And in July, when these cuts took effect, one patron was outside and said, "So terribly disappointed that what we voted for apparently wasn't." Not realizing that even though you can vote for additional taxes, local governments don't necessarily have the ability to collect those funds.
And I think that's a good point. I don't think we all know that.
Right.
That's a very good point.
Our second major problem are the spillover effects. Because all local governments are within that same $10 pie, the actions of any overlapping taxing jurisdiction can have a detrimental effect on another. So, in Sweet Home, Sweet Home's in Lynn County, as is Albany, all three, the city of Sweet Home, the city of Albany, and Lynn County, all have public safety levies. If one of them were to go out for a larger levy, as Albany has done, that exacerbates compression on Lynn County's public safety levy. And vice versa, if Lynn County were to go out for a larger levy to provide additional services, that would in turn detrimentally harm the other cities in Lynn County. In November, Madras, Special District in Madras floated a local option levy for its pool, an important part of that community. That would have harmed the Jefferson County jail levy by exacerbating its compression. In DeChutes County, a change to the 911 district rate would have harmed the city of Redmond by worsening its compression. So, we have this pie, and voters don't necessarily realize that the actions that they're taking in local option levies can be harming other jurisdictions. And the third major problem is that property owners, as pointed out by the Oregonian editorial board this past summer, property owners that have reached their tax limits can, in essence, vote to raise taxes on their neighbors. They don't have any skin in the game when it comes to providing additional services that the community may want. Now, it may be far-fetched to imagine that many property owners know when they've reached their maximum tax rate, but nevertheless, this is an issue that gnaws in Oregonians because if you're going to vote on additional taxes, everyone should have skin in the game and contribute to those local services. So, the solution that the league is proposing is what we're calling a voter-control referral. This would empower voters to pass local option levies outside of compression limits. These local option levies are limited to no more than five years in duration. They have to be voter-approved. It would not be retroactive, so it wouldn't raise taxes on anybody. Local government would have to go out and subsequently pass another local option levy that explicitly states these are outside of limitations. But it gives communities control over their destiny, ability to provide the services they want locally, and some accountability where folks can decide whether or not they want to continue supporting those measures. So, we will be seeking that referral in the 2013 session.
Great.
Any questions about this particular referral? I've got a couple. The way I understood it, for example, the two levies I know that we have here that we pay into are the sheriff's levy and the vector control levy. Let's say these were, I don't know how many years each one of those has to go. If this is adopted and comes out, I presume it'd come out in next year's election? Would that be the--
Likely, yeah.
Yeah. In next year's election. And say, our levies extended beyond that time, those levies would still be under our cap until they came out for a renewal, and then they could, should we get this through the voter approval, then it could come out of the levy. But anything that's under our current cap, even if this passes, would still be on our current cap until it gets renewed. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. You could speed up renewal if you go out and the county, say its levy expired next year and it went out inside a five-year approval or extension. It could nevertheless come back and ask voters to pass a separate levy outside of compression limits and then just not collect the tax on the other levy. It would essentially replace the other levy.
My understanding is the sheriff is looking at, actually is setting up a district here, and if a district is formed, however, that would still come into our cap.
Yeah, the creation of districts by county is an interesting phenomenon. Counties have the ability to create special districts, which creates a new permanent rate, a new player in the permanent rate pie under that $10 limitation, so it's not subject to being compressed, first, like a levy. But it now competes against any city or special district's permanent rate. Cities do not have the ability to create special districts. Counties do, and their county commissions still oversee those special districts. So, the creation of the Multnomah County Library District, for example, it's a separate district, has its own permanent tax rate, but the county commission still oversees it. Cities don't have that.
You don't, actually, and here we've got, it was introduced by the county, we have our library district, but it's actually administered by the cities. Money's come into the cities.
Right.
But that was through an intergovernmental agreement with every single city in the county.
I don't--
Is that right?
The Board of County Commissioners--
Come up here to the mic.
Yeah, to clarify that.
So, with the library district, the money does come into individual cities, and we make decisions locally, but because it's a county special district, the Board of County Commissioners oversees the financial part of it. So, we actually have meetings. We have a library district advisory committee that I go to meetings quarterly, at least, and then we have to report to the Board of County Commissioners so that they know that we're expending that money in the way which they intended.
Right.
So, ultimately, they are--
They're overseeing.
--over that district.
Overseeing, yes.
Yes, yes. Just to clarify.
The solutions that Sweet Home has sought, or has considered, is the creation of a police district to serve its citizens. But while it would create a permanent rate and more tax stability, it would spin the police department outside of the city council's control, and so many citizens view the mayor and the council or the commission as, that would be an important duty for them to oversee public safety, so they're very hesitant to want to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, and another topic.
Number two. All right, our second referral is a change to Measure 50. Measures 47 and 50 were passed in the mid-1990s. Measure 47 was deemed to be partially unworkable, so the legislature also referred out Measure 50, which did a number of different things. First thing it did was it created this new assessed value limitation. It looked at a property's 1995 real market value, subtracted 10 percent, and then capped growth at 3 percent annually. So, in the chart before you, you see that there's this separation where the dotted line, the dotted red line reflects real market value in the bubble in the housing market, and then the lower blue line grows at maximum at 3 percent annually. That's why a lot of voters, a lot of property owners have said, you know, my property's value has declined so much, why are my taxes still going up? It's because there's still a gap between your real market value limitations and your assessed value, and that assessed value will continue to grow until you reach those real market value limits. And then the third thing that Measure 50 did was it set permanent tax rates for all taxing jurisdictions. So, by limiting, by looking at a property's value in the mid-1990s and using that snapshot as a starting point for establishing assessed value, huge inequities have emerged as properties have appreciated or depreciated at different rates. So, here's two examples, an example of two different neighborhoods in the city of Portland. One was an established neighborhood in the mid-1990s on Southwest 61st Street. Mid-1990s, you would be able to buy a home there around $140,000. With 3 percent annual growth, the assessed value today is $110,000 to $150,000 in property taxes. This includes general governments and cities and bond measures. It's between $4,200 and $4,900. And there's a gentrifying neighborhood off Alberta Street, if you know where that is, in northeast on 16th. This neighborhood was significantly more depressed in the mid-1990s. Homes could be bought there for $30,000, and we all should have done so at the time because the real market values have grown considerably. But by looking, by pegging your assessed value and only growing that at 3 percent, the assessed value on those homes is only $50,000 to $80,000 now, and the taxes that they pay are $1,100 to $1,900, considerably less than their neighbors across town, despite having identical real market values. This is an inequity under Oregon's system, which will continue in perpetuity because we do not, as I'll point out, recalibrate taxes at the time of sale or at any other point. This is a map of Multnomah County, and I've got one of Clackamas County next, that shows the ratio of assessed value to real market value. And what this map shows, in essence, is what sort of property break you're getting as a result of Measure 50. Properties that are in blue are being taxed on about 50 percent or less of their property's real market value. Folks who are in yellow are 70 percent of a property's real market value, and then folks in red are at 100 percent of real market value. So, you see that on the east side of Portland, north and northeast and even parts of southeast Portland, property owners there are receiving huge discounts as a result of Measure 50. The further east county you move, the colors change, they get hotter, so to speak, and folks there are paying taxes on a higher percentage of their property's real market value. We found a home in North Portland that has a real market value estimated at $230,000 and assessed value of $20,000. They pay less than $500 in taxes for schools and general governments annually.
Wow.
And you can understand why this would, this has created a very unlevel playing field. It's undoubtedly spurred gentrification in a lot of north and northeast neighborhoods because folks there have particularly depressed property taxes, and what you're paying less of monthly in a property tax bill, you can pay more of in a mortgage. So, the market is certainly capitalizing on this quirk to our system. This is a similar map that Chawalton Valley Fire and Rescue put together of Clackamas County. You can see in the Milwaukee area, more red, similarly in Clackamas, North Clackamas, and Sunnyside. But then there's sprinkled blue throughout as well, even in Westland, and obviously further south as well. So, very different rates of what people are paying taxes on, just depending on what the property's worth in the 90s and how it's changed since. One more example from DeChutes County, showing that the inequities exist in large, medium, and small cities. And Legislative Revenue Office did a report in 2010 that looked at what they call these horizontal inequities in four different counties, Multnomah, DeChutes, Jackson, and Sherman, and found major inequities in all four counties that it studied. Oregon's unique, believe it or not, there are, the graph in front of you says there are 18 states that have similar assessment limits. One of those phased out, so the quote should actually read 17 states. There are 17 other states that have property tax limitations similar to Oregon's. All of those, except for Arizona, recalibrate at the time of sale. So, Oregon's unique in that we've permanently severed the connection between real market values and assessed values, and that separation will continue, as I said, forever. So, what we're proposing is to do what most other states do and reset a property's assessed value to real market value at the time of sale or construction. This is a market-driven determination of a property's value and a potential owner's ability to pay, and we think it's a much better tool that we can use rather than granting certain properties permanent favorable tax treatment.
I've got a couple of questions here, too. One's an observation we've had people talking about, where they don't understand why their market value's going down, their taxes are still coming up, but that's simply because it hasn't come, hasn't matched the assessed value. My question is this, let's say a piece of property under the current, under the current legislature, well, under what you're proposing, in fact, comes forward, and in fact, we have housing that their market value has gone under the assessed value. Is that still at a 3 percent rate? I mean, is, do you know what happens under those conditions?
So, when--
You could reset under a value that, in fact, is less than what we have now.
Right.
And if the conditions get very bad.
Absolutely. When the two lines cross, real market value comes below assessed value, what's created is a maximum assessed value that holds constant where those two points crossed.
Oh, I see.
And that maximum assessed value does not grow, it just stays constant. So, that level will remain unchanged while your property's value dips. However, on your way back up, you can grow in excess of 3 percent. So, we're seeing this in a lot of areas in DeChutes County, where the market crash was so severe, a lot of those lines crossed, and now on their way back up to that maximum assessed value, folks are seeing their property taxes grow in excess of 3 percent.
Okay.
After you cross that line again, your rate of growth is capped at 3 percent.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think these were both great. I appreciate you coming out and doing this. Good information. Thanks for doing your work.
Yeah, I appreciate your coming out to, and I'm in many, many cities, I'm sure, and talking about what you're doing. I mean, I'm surprised what the intent was when you were trying to formulate what you would be looking at in this legislative process, and the city agreed to these two items coming forward in the process. But I appreciate your coming out, and I appreciate all the work that the League of Oregon Cities does for us.
Yes, yes.
The things that you bring forward to us, I think, are things, in terms of, in terms of looking for legislation to be done through the voter-approved process, have been things I think that have probably been a benefit to almost all of the cities that you represent. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity and those kind of words, too. Thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Go on to the next item on the agenda, which is actually future agenda items. Any items that you want to see with our future study sessions that we don't have already marked on?
I've got one.
Okay.
I would like to talk about the railroad bridge between Oregon City and Gladstone. Let's see what's being done on that.
All right.
Just get an update on it.
Right. And that, that could be an update that actually had a city commission meeting as part of a manager's report, I would think.
Yeah.
We are looking into that, too, because we got a complaint from someone on the National Resources Committee about the abutment eroding. Is that the one you're talking about? I think John's looking into that right now. So, you don't have to report tonight, but we'll, we'll follow up.
Okay. Any other items that you want to come forward? With that, we'll go into discussion items, the recognition of neighborhood associations in the city of Oregon City. Nancy Ite, are you the key person here?
I will get things started and turn it over to Bill Kabeizman, and then allow you to discuss all you wish.
Thank God.
Just very briefly, I'd like to give you a quick history of why we're having this discussion tonight, for the public as well as those that are here and all of us. The citizen involvement council asked city staff many questions related to the neighborhood association bylaws and liability insurance, coverage for members of the CIC as well as for neighborhood association members who are involved in their neighborhood activities. The city formally recognizes neighborhood associations by resolution, which includes an agreement that's signed by the city and the neighborhood chair. The purpose of the neighborhood association, according to the agreement, is to augment the city, citizen involvement process in land use-related matters, and also to provide a foundation for a wide range of activities that promote the general health and welfare of the community. So, the neighborhood association is just one organization within the city's boundaries that works to improve the function of the city, and others might be like the Main Street Board or the Chamber of Commerce and so forth. The city has provided criteria and guidance for the neighborhood associations as far as, like, bylaw templates and different things, assistance financially and so forth, but the associations have remained autonomous in nature so that they can serve as a voice for the residents without any city interference. In the past, the city has not recognized the neighborhood associations as a means in which to act, such as, like, the Planning Commission or the Urban Renewal Commission. They are a governing body, they can make decisions. And because of the neighborhood association's independent nature, the city's insurance company does not allow the associations to be added to the city's policy. So, if the neighborhood association wanted to have its insurance, then it would need to obtain its own insurance, liability insurance. However, the members of the CIC, which exist at the pleasure of the city commission, they are covered under the city's policy, just like all other boards and committee members are covered. So, due to the questions raised by the CIC on the neighborhood association's status and the liability coverage, city staff recommends that the city commission discuss the matter, discuss whether they want to make them an instrumentality of the city or to let them continue to remain autonomous as they are at this time. The bylaws template, I know that there's been quite a bit of discussion about the bylaws template, and that's not a matter of discussion tonight unless you wish to discuss it. That's something that would be determined after we have this discussion, so. And the city attorney, he has provided a memo as well as a draft resolution and agreement that I'm sure he'd like to take from there and explain a little further.
Thank you, Nate.
Could I just ask one question? You said that you have, there's a signed agreement between cities and neighborhood chairs? Is that something that actually occurs?
Yes. Back in 1997, neighborhood association, you passed a resolution, and then each neighborhood association signed the agreement. So, this is an example of one right here.
But it doesn't occur, like, every time they change officers?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It's just initially where they're recognized as an official neighborhood of the city.
Okay, I want to be clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, and Mayor and Commissioners. I'm not certain I have too much more to add to what Nancy told you. This sort of came to our office as an insurance question, are they covered? And we had some discussions with the insurance company, and they took the position, and I think it's probably right, the way that the city has dealt with neighborhood associations in the past, is that they're not part of the city. Yes, the city recognizes them, and that has some benefits to the neighborhood associations. They get free appeals, they're statutorily entitled to notice, and some other things. And what this really comes down to is a policy question for the commission. Is it, do you want the neighborhood association to be considered part of the city and then subject to the city's-- subject to the city's thus entitled to protection under the city's insurance policies, which would also entail a number of other things that sort of come with it? We would have -- the city would have an obligation to go through the training, make sure that these neighborhood associations do certain things, and there'd also be some other implications from it, some that may not be, you know, we haven't done full analysis, but there might be some concerns about public contracting if they were to enter into an agreement with somebody for some reason. And so there's a number of smaller things, but it's really the bigger policy question. We can deal with the rest of the things. And there's the element of cost, which is one part of it. There's the element of independence. There's the element of encouraging people to serve by providing that insurance. I know that there are a number of people who will serve on neighborhood associations who would like to see that insurance extended, and there are other concerns that we may not have identified. But that's really what we want to have, that the neighborhood association, CIC, has asked us to bring to you. And so if you have other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I guess my question is, what does liability cover?
It's a good question. It's generally, and I think you may hear some testimony tonight about some of the concerns, but I would expect that if somebody's acting within the scope of their duties on the neighborhood association, it protects them from allegations of, you know, that there is defamation, or that somehow they hurt property by recommending a denial of a permit or something like that. And, you know, there's one question of liability. You know, let's say somebody says something derogatory towards somebody else.
Yes.
There may not be any defamation for whatever reason, but there's still the cost of defending yourself in a lawsuit. And I think that's really the critical piece for a lot of people, is if I'm going to put myself out there in the public, something may happen to me, and it may not have any validity, but it's still, I'm still going to have to spend a lot of money, spend a lot of time dealing with it, and that liability insurance sure would be nice to help me.
The reason I ask that is that recent two or three or four weeks, some real ugly emails have been going out from different members of neighborhood associations, and you might have a challenge from a member of one neighborhood association suing the member of another neighborhood association. We always have an attorney here that if he catches a string in any comments that we're going to make, he'll probably step in and say something. And I don't, you know, each neighborhood association can't have a lawyer associated with them when they're doing these kinds of things, but the fact is, my concern is, would we be getting ourselves into a situation where, in fact, claims are made and they have nothing to do with what the city actually controls?
Yes, that could be a very, you know, depending on how the claims were made, that could very, very possibly be a result. And, you know, in those situations, if we were, if the city were to provide that insurance, the client for the lawsuit would be the official.
Right.
And their interest in resolving that lawsuit may be slightly different than the city's.
I have a question. I asked for a copy of our insurance policy, and in reading through that, I noticed that the policy covers volunteers. So I don't understand why these don't fall under volunteers.
Mainly because they're volunteering their time for the neighborhood association, which is a separate entity than the city.
Even though we say we're formally recognizing them.
We're recognizing them, right. And we're -- and part of that is driven by the language in ORS 227175, which requires the city to give notice to those neighborhood associations that have been formally recognized. And, you know, that's sort of, if you trace the language back, that's where it comes from. And what that was, you know, I don't know the specifics of what happened there, but essentially what it means is, there may be a number of different groups in the Halandale neighborhood, for example, and the city says, "We're going to recognize this group that's formed by these people as opposed to this group that's over on this, these streets over here." And so, you know, there's got to be something that we say, "This group speaks for the Halandale Neighborhood Association." They're not part of the city, but we're going to recognize you as the people who we're going to listen to as Halandale, or Park Place, or McLaughlin, or wherever it may be.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I follow. I think one of the reasons that we cover the volunteers when we have city-sponsored cleanups and so forth, that's injury, and it's not defamation. I'm more concerned about something that might be regarded as defamation or slander or something, that somebody comes after.
And one of the things that happens under the agreement is, to the extent they're available, city facilities are available for neighborhood associations. And so, you know, there may well be liability insurance, you know, slip-and-fall type of situations, if it's on a city facility or wherever it may be. But, yeah, that's more the directors-officers-type protection.
Then I believe Nancy, I had an update from our insurance company. We've kind of gone round and round with them, I think, trying to get quotes about whether they would even do this coverage, and if so, what it would be and so forth. And Nancy didn't, haven't we learned something there?
Yes, other than just because of the neighborhood association's independent nature, the city's insurance company does not allow the associations to be added to its policy, so they would have to be an instrumentality of the city. But then the effect of that would be that they would not have their autonomous nature, too. So anyway, but as far as the cost, just an average cost among insurance companies, directors and officers' cost of insurance is approximately $850 per year for a million-dollar policy. If they're doing general events and so forth, fundraising, garage sales, that sort of thing, the annual cost is about $500. So, you know, it's something that the neighborhood association would be responsible for.
Per neighborhood?
You know what? I believe so, because each neighborhood association is independent of the others.
One thing occurs to me that we might consider is that whether, as we set our goals and then go into our budget process for two-year periods, whether we put in their money where the neighborhood association can actually pay for their own liability insurance. And so there's money available to them, but they're not under the city's line. I mean, the neighborhood association sets up its own insurance. That's something that we might think of. And I know we got proponents, I mean, this came forward because I think people in the neighborhood associations brought it forward, and please come up and speak. Be sure to give your name, get the card filled out. You can fill it out afterwards. Come up and introduce yourself, and we're going to assume you're from the City of Oregon City, but if you're not, let us know.
Yes, my name is Bob LaSalle, and I'm from the City of Oregon.
Well, you might say the neighborhood association.
Oh, the Park Place.
Yeah.
And in fact, I'm not an officer of any, I just brought it up, I guess, to be a good guy.
That's all right.
But it looks like the city's brought up some pretty good points as to why they can't do it. But now, I just heard you, Mayor, saying something about putting in the budget to give to the neighborhood associations to buy their own insurance.
That's a thought.
It's a solution, yeah.
My hearing aid, I'm sorry, is not working tonight, so.
Well, you got that one right.
Yeah. And then something was brought up some time back in some correspondence about possibly setting up the neighborhoods as nonprofits with, is it a 501?
103.
C, E, I think, something like that. I don't know how much that kind of thing would cost. And then, of course, you'd have to buy the insurance on top of that also. Or maybe the city making some kind of arrangement where, as an issue came up, they would add available $5,000 or $6,000 or whatever toward attorney's fees. I haven't had to pay any attorneys lately, so I don't know how far that would go.
It's on your attorney.
It could be one meeting or it could be five.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my thoughts, is that my address to the commission the other evening was my concern that we were not going to be able to step out of the box, you know, do some innovative thinking, research, to try to come up with something other than what may be available now. That's, I like that idea of giving us money.
Well, that's a surprise.
Well, we're interested in that, too.
And then, I mean, in the process--
I'm looking for the $174.
Do you have any oysters in your pocket?
I could get some.
You might want to look for a pearl.
You know, I mean, if we investigate, one possibility is that you might have an insurance entity that is willing to give you a break if all the neighborhood associations go to that same company, or something of that nature, so there may be some benefits out.
And it would be similar to doing the newsletters. I mean, there'd be a, it'd be part, like, we provide so much money for the newsletters for all the neighborhoods, and so that could be part of it. I think that's a great idea to talk about.
As far as the training is concerned, I don't see that they would require any more training than the training we get on some of the other committees.
You want us to address the staff demand? Because that is a, I think, depending on how we do this, if it's simply, I mean, keeping it really, really simple as sort of a reimbursement or a line item for some support for them without making them an instrumentality of the city is different. If they become an instrumentality of the city, then yes, the staff impacts are enormous. They're enormous.
They're huge.
There would also be, if there were claims made by the neighborhood association, then who would be responsive? Would that be the neighborhood association? Would that be city staff? Would we just be giving you the money to purchase your own policy? There would have, who would manage that?
Think through it a little more.
Nancy, I have a question. We have a--
That's out of my realm.
Yes.
You gave us a city comparison chart.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Mr. LaSalle. And I don't see on there, and maybe this isn't available, but do any of those cities on that comparison chart provide insurance, or do their neighborhoods have insurance?
No, none of them. Well, actually, Milwaukee, I'd, I--
I think Milwaukee does, as I read it.
They do something, and I truly just didn't have time to call them and get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
But, excuse me, they, none of the others do. It was just kind of an interesting chart. If you take a look at it, it just kind of showed in what cities, what position within the city is the neighborhood representative, if they have them, what cities have neighborhood associations and which ones don't. Do the, does the city liaison to the neighborhood association, if they have one, attend neighborhood association meetings? And of all of them, the answer was no. So occasionally, they have a staff member that attends for a specific purpose, but as a regular attendee at their neighborhood meetings, no. Anyway, I thought it was just kind of interesting to see where we stand with other neighborhoods.
You heard me laugh, and I won't say what city, I won't say what mayor. A mayor that's been in the city for some time. I'll say it's not Gladstone. Somebody might have the idea that it was Gladstone, because you've been there for so long, it isn't Gladstone. But it was at a federal policy advisory committee, one of the mayors that was there indicated, "Well, we don't have any neighborhood associations," and a staff member who happened to be there from that same city and came up to whisper, "Yes, we do."
At least not to all of us.
All of us know that we have neighborhood associations.
Excuse me, Mayor, the City of Sandy, each council, city council member is assigned to one or more of the neighborhoods, too.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, just as a liaison. That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
That's something we might want to consider.
Well, and I know we've had, I don't know, I don't know how, where this discussion came, but I know that the possibility that the individual, we've made comments about the fact that the commission has been in the past primarily McLaughlin neighborhood--
Yes.
Still is.
Still is.
--elected, and that, you know, I don't know that I would necessarily want to go that direction in terms of this, but that there's a possibility that in the future, when the neighborhoods become even stronger and we keep adding more neighborhood associations, that the individual seats on the commission would be representative of possibly certain neighborhoods or something, which, you know, I don't know if that's done in other places either, but then you would have, you know, a pretty good representation of the city.
I think there are cities that actually have districts.
Right. So that's an interesting idea.
Could be done in that fashion. Paul, come on forward.
Thank you, Paul Eckhart. I'm representing Kanema a little bit, and myself. If some of the neighborhoods were, had more empowerment, and in a sense, coming back, and I remember when David Fraser was interviewing, a comment that was being made was about looking to the neighborhoods to be drivers of how monies and services would be allocated, and what were the desires and the needs and wants of the neighborhoods themselves, and what they wanted to prioritize. If we start reaching out and be in public works or wherever, how these monies and how these services are being fought out, if you reach to the neighborhoods and you actually ask them and say, "What streets in your neighborhood do you think are the ones that critically need improvements or where we should be putting up the money?"
My street.
What?
My street. It needs a lot of work. And that's what a lot of people are going to tell you.
And, you know, that's right. Your own backyard.
They're going to say--
And mine.
My street needs a lot of work.
Your own backyard.
I understand what you're saying.
But it's not that I've ever asked John about improving my street.
Never.
Never.
Only on a daily basis.
Please, God.
I haven't written about it ten times, Paul.
I understand what you're saying.
But the idea is literally empowerment. And if for some way we start looking out and we're saying, "Okay, our neighborhoods are more than just an independent group of people out there that we're trying to pull together and keep and let them feel free to voice their opinions about virtually anything outside of politics." This is just their street, their backyard.
Yeah.
That's one thing, and of which I kind of laughingly said last night at the CIC meeting, that's what my wife has told me is her desire. And I've been married 50 years, so sometimes you have to hear those things. The key to it, though, is that that's really a core value of keeping a degree of independence and allowing this stuff to rise up from the bottom to the top. And I don't want to ever see that, that, kind of the yeast rising. I want to see that part of the process to happen because that's a purification. But yet, at the same time, I would always and honestly try to tell you, I would love to see you reach back and ask, and to be more, reach into the communities, into the neighborhoods, and try to solicit more of what their wants and desires and how they think the monies and the priorities should be attached to them.
I think we hear from them quite frequently.
I know, but it's, but this is, you know, it's not simple, and my choice, I guess, if I was, is to maintain independence.
Absolutely.
Okay, just absolute independence. And, but I would, you know, I just hope that we create more, not less, bi-directional communication.
Oh, absolutely. I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
Thank you.
I think OC reports has really helped with that, too, because every individual can--
Yeah.
And Paul, I do understand it. I mean, I've been married 50 years as well, and your wife tells you things. You're getting old. You just don't hear like you used to.
Yes.
That's my excuse. Anyway.
Well, I want the neighborhoods to really think about this, because I've always said less government is better. Less is more. So let's think about the whole, what impact would this, if they come under the city umbrella as a group--
the city umbrella as a group, the city is responsible for, what does that look for, look like for them as individual groups? I'm very concerned that the city will be just, like, taking over and be the voice at the top, saying, you know, "Do this, do that," I don't know. Something to think about.
And, and the thing is, things that rise up to the top within the C I C in terms of neighborhood association dialogues are things that we'll probably be most responsive to, because it's a broader picture of the community.
And they should come out at the C I C meetings as well. And then, the, the proposal you made for the five-hundred dollars in the budget, I think that's, that's a good start to kind of put there, I just don't know where the budget, where that money's going to come from.
Well, I mean, but that's, that's part of our goal-setting session, or, or, or budgeting process with.
And Mayor, we do, you know that there is a stipend already in the budget from, from the city, and so it could be simply that they look at the existing amount, or a modest increase in that amount, and how they apportion it, because what we have found, interestingly, is that the use of technology for some neighborhoods is a big factor.
It is.
Cuts way down on the postage, and then for other neighborhoods, a lot of their members don't seem to be inclined that way, so it doesn't save you anything. So we'll have to look at that and see.
Good discussion.
I've got, I've got a request to speak from Nancy Ied.
Wow.
I just, I heard, I heard Commissioner Mom say, "Five-hundred dollars," and I just wanted to, I, I just did some quick math here with the information that the insurance company provided, and when you times all that by eleven neighborhood associations, you have to take that in mind, too.
Yes.
And I come up with a figure of thirty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and that's going to be just ballpark, right, you know?
Right.
But that would be directors and officers, it would be just regular, like, general events, like fundraising and meetings and that sort of thing, and then there's also hazardous events, if they have big parties where they, you know, bring in.
Party.
You know, neighborhood associations could get in there.
As long as we're invited.
Commissioner Smith, invite us.
Different types of, it depends, what kind of, how they define hazardous, but anyway, it was in the thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Bungee jump.
Right. So I just wanted, it wasn't five-hundred.
No, 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 I knew that. I knew that. Thank you for the clerk.
Any more discussion on the topic at this point? Before we go on the manager's report, I'm going to have to do a mea culpa. I was at the C I C meeting, the last C I C meeting, and we had this round, you know, roundtable, and they invited me to say anything, and so I didn't have anything to say, and I went up to Amy and mentioned, she was, she was angry at me because I didn't include her on the Southeast Concept Plan thing. So I went up, I went up to her, and I said, "You know, we've got, we've got seats available on the Traffic Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Committee."
I love it.
She says, "Well, why didn't you mention that when we were asked if you had anything in the roundtable discussion? If you could please think it back to your respective neighborhood associations, we do have some seats available on two committees."
Good job, Amy. Congratulations, I love it.
With that, city manager's report.
Let me check your request to speak.
Well, that's Nancy Ied again?
Yeah, yes, it is. So I just have one more question. I'm just trying to understand.
You don't want to get one minute on the second thing.
Is, is the commission giving staff any direction on this? I, I know we had given you a memo by the city attorney, and also a resolution for, you know, to revise the agreement with the neighborhoods. What is your direction?
Well, my, my suggestion is that, I mean, what I was throwing out there was, maybe the neighborhoods and associations could come up with their own insurance policies, and that maybe the city could help. I mean, that's, that's what I was throwing out there.
Is, is that a consensus of the commission, or?
I think that's some.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
To look at.
I don't think, I don't think we've come to any decisions tonight.
No, I understand, but you know what, where should we go from here, as far as what to provide for you?
Well, you've already, you've already gave an idea of what you thought the economic impact would be, but.
I think I would provide the information to the C I C and have them get it out to the neighborhoods, and let the neighborhoods make their.
Yeah. Give us some input.
On whether they want, what, how they want to handle the insurance?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Is that? Okay.
Okay.
Otherwise, I don't think we had any real decisions, I guess.
What I saw consensus on was autonomous.
Yes.
I did see that.
Not being in a problem with the city. Absolutely. They have to stay independent.
There wasn't any discussion of the revision of the neighborhood agreement. We do have existing neighborhood agreements, and I can talk to staff whether with this, whether we want to go back and look at revisions, or whether the, the current ones are still good, and if they're still good, you know, why, why mess with them?
Right.
Yeah, and it might be beneficial to the neighborhood associations to look at those previous resolutions.
I agree, because they probably don't even know what they own.
Yeah.
A lot of them don't.
So we might, we might just make sure we send out copies to the chairs of what the current resolution, the, the resolution that had passed before, what is.
And I would just say, if you have the email for the whole exact for the neighborhood, Nancy, if you could just send it to the whole exact of each neighborhood, the resolution.
Okay, the current one.
Yeah, the current, sorry.
Right, yep, we can do that.
Because sometimes communication doesn't follow through, and sometimes they don't meet very often. Sometimes they meet tonight while we're here, and we can't be there.
Independent.
They are independent. That would be my neighborhood, independent.
Okay, with that, city manager's report.
Commissioner Mayor, we have a new staff member who has been with us off and on, but now going to be with us all the time, and she is our new Assistant Finance Director. I'm going to ask Wyatt Parno to come up and introduce her.
Oh, nice, I was wondering. Welcome. Who is that person? No, I was hoping I was going to ask for an introduction, so this is great.
Can I borrow your necklace?
She's got bling. That was one of the requirements for hiring.
She's got bling, Daddy.
Thank you, David.
I love it.
Mayor and commission members, thank you. I do want to introduce Maria McElveen, our new Assistant Finance Director. Maria comes to us most directly from Village of Wellington in Florida, and they have a pretty fantastic website that communicates really well their finances, so I'm super excited to have her here. You're very fortunate, now you have two finance directors to some extent, because Maria worked there for seven years as their finance director.
Great.
And she also has a very extensive background in audit and consulting, so strong compliance background, which I know is very important to all of you, and I'm excited to have her. She just recently, on a road trip across the United States, moved her family, including her husband John and her two kids, Derek and Cassandra, and their dog Lucky, and I'll let you say hello.
Well, good to have you.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes, yes, well, thank you, I'm very excited to be here. As Wyatt mentioned, I have a lot of background, both as a finance director and on the other side, as the consultant to the government, so, you know, it kind of helps balance certain things, you know, give a new perspective when you're looking at numbers, and give you that slant of, wait, can we do it better, or, you know, is this the best way? How do we communicate? And as Wyatt mentioned, we have a lot of communication, so as you guys have been talking, I've been making copious notes, so, yeah, you know, maybe we can talk to the neighborhood associations about this and that. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you, particularly as we're working on our biennial budget for this coming season, and, you know, getting good feedback and having that dialogue, communication about how to improve Oregon City even more, and how to make us more transparent and responsive.
That's wonderful.
So I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome.
What do you think about Pacific Northwest winter?
Florida, climate.
We do have a beautiful winter in Florida, however, we have an absolutely hideous rest of the year. I moved here originally in September and had the most amazing end of the summer and fall, so that will carry me forward till at least March or April.
You'll need it till May, you'll need it till May.
So be proud of it, a month and a half.
Starts July fifth. I don't want to disillusion you, but actually, last summer was our longest stretch of dry weather, on record.
The first, as a funny side story, the first time I ever came to Portland was close about eighteen years ago, and, because my husband grew up here, and he was, he came here when he was about one, and didn't leave till he went to college, and he's been trying to get me to move here since then, a lot, a couple decades now, in the works. But almost a couple decades ago, I came here and, came here for my birthday, which was in June, and my husband told me it was very mild, and so I wore, you know, T-shirts and jeans, and we had a snow blizzard.
Love that, yes.
That's when I decided I wasn't going to move to Oregon, but, you know, after, after a while, it grew on me, and I love the Pacific Northwest. I love the character here, and, like I said, I'm excited to be here. And after driving across the country and having snow blizzards and getting stuck on a couple mountain passes, I'm okay with rain.
All right.
Rain I can deal with.
I will tell you, in my life, we have only experienced one, the, one equivalent in the Willamette Valley of a hurricane. It was associated with a low-pressure typhoon that was in, in the Pacific, and it came up here in.
I had three back-to-back, so they get old really quickly.
So you don't have to worry, you don't have to worry too much about those kinds of storms.
Well, you've got the weather sorted out.
You don't want to talk about money.
She's already signed. You have to stay. One more fact, Maria also, she has a bachelor's degree in history as well, which I thought was really great, since we are the historical hub of the Pacific Northwest.
Actually, it's kind of funny, when I came to interview for this job, you know, he gave me the address, and I go, "Oh, that's right across the street from McLaughlin House, I've been there." It's like, why would you, like, I love history, it's my first degree, I went, I wanted to go into teaching, didn't kind of work out that way for me, which is okay, but it's a good, it's a good addition.
Yes.
And it, it is my passion, so it is my hobby, and, and what I love to do.
I invite you to join the McLaughlin Memorial Association.
Probably will.
What if Benny emailed you all recently?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners.
Good job. Thank you, thank you for the introduction.
Thank you. Next thing I want to mention is the retreat planning and materials are complete now, and did all of you get your materials yet? If you didn't, you'll get it tomorrow.
We got it.
Also, the H R director reported to me that one of the executive session reports from this evening is missing, so you might want to check your materials. If you have that, please return it to us. And if there are any questions about the retreat dates or times, Nancy, we can remind you when, when that is.
Four o'clock P M. on Friday at the Pioneer Community Center, and then, again, meeting eight o'clock breakfast Saturday morning, eight-thirty we begin.
Great.
Do we bring our suit and bags, just stay there?
If you want to, you may.
You live right down the street.
I know. Well, thank you, without the study sessions, turn.
Thank you.